Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Merrimack School Board, SAU 26, for October 16, 2023. If you would please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I'd just like to acknowledge Board Member Halter has been excused, and our student representative, Shawn Evidente, has also been excused from tonight's meeting. We will open our meeting tonight, as we do often, with public participation. If you'd like to speak tonight, please make your way to the microphone, state your name and address. If you are a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name for the Seeing none, we will move on to recognitions. And we have one, we have several. So tonight, the Merrimack School Board will be recognizing the SAD program, which is entering its 40th anniversary here in Merrimack. And just to give you a little bit of history behind that, in 1981, Robert Anastas, a health teacher and hockey coach, disheartened by the tragic alcohol-related deaths of two students in separate alcohol deaths, initiated Students Against Drunk Driving, otherwise known as the SAD program, in Wayland, Massachusetts. In 1999, SAD expanded its reach and shifted its focus over the years, addressing various destructive decisions such as underage drinking, drug use, and violence, thereby adopting a comprehensive stance on advocating for safe and healthy decisions among youth. SAD was a significant program because it emphasized student leadership. SAD chapters empower students to plan activities and take responsibility for the program. In 1982, Merrimack High School, with the support of former police chief Mike Milligan, who secured a grant for $500 for Merrimack to start a SAD chapter. The Merrimack High School SAD chapter was the first in New Hampshire, and one of the first in the country to follow the Massachusetts program. And so tonight, we are joined by several of our state representatives, as this has been officially made a proclamation through the State House in Concord. And I just wanted to read the proclamation.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. You can hear that.
I'm just gonna move this.
Please do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. And on behalf of all the state reps representing Merrimack, my name's Rosemarie Rung. I'm very proud to be here to start off the proclamations. I also want to acknowledge my colleagues, Representative Maureen Mooney, Representative Nancy Murphy, Representative Tim McGue, Representative Wendy Thomas, Representative Bill Boyd, and two representatives who aren't here tonight, Representative Janine Nodder and Representative Bob Healy. But we are also proud of the SAD program and the support it's received from the community. And I want to invite the really spark of the program, Mr. Jim Bailey, to come up. I want to read a proclamation to him. And this is from the House of Representatives from the state of New Hampshire, a declaration in recognition of James Bailey. Whereas James, Jim Bailey, has owned and operated Bailey's Towing and Auto Body, LLC, for more than 40 years. And whereas, as a member of the Merrimack community, he firmly supports the opportunity to educate our children, teenagers, and young adults about the dangers of impaired driving. And whereas, he has generously donated countless hours of his time to stage mock accidents using wrecked cars, actors, EMTs, and police, to show high school students the tragedies that result from poor decisions behind the wheel. And whereas, he is a sponsor of the SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions Dance Marathon, the Mock Trial, and the Independence Day Parade float, to showcase the Merrimack School District's volunteers and elected officials. And whereas, Jim's efforts to educate our youth about making good decisions behind the wheel, so they and others on the road can get home safely, is greatly appreciated. Now, therefore, be it declared that Jim, in his capacity as educator and mentor, has undoubtedly saved countless lives of our youth. And be it further declared, by virtue of my signature inscribed below, the House of Representatives does publicly thank James Bailey for his longstanding public service to the community of Merrimack by promoting safe and responsible driving. Dated the 16th day of October 2023, Sherman A. Packard, Speaker of the House.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It means a lot.
Yeah. Look, you gotta stay up here. Stay over here. Yeah. And we've got a few more. At this time, I want to invite Representative Maureen Mooney up for our next proclamation.
And just before we hear from Representative Mooney, from the Merrimack School District, we would like to award you this plaque in recognition of more than 30 years of prevention education with your outstanding contributions to the mock accident at Merrimack High School.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Rung, and Chairman Martin, Superintendent, all of you. Good to see you all this evening. I'm here to read a declaration recognizing Dan Bantham. Dan, could you come forward at this point? Thank you. Again, this declaration is from the Speaker of the New Hampshire House, as well as the delegation of representatives from Merrimack, including those of us present, and Representatives Nodder and Healy, who couldn't be with us this evening. A declaration in recognition of Daniel Bantham. Whereas, Daniel, Dan Bantham, has worked as an insurance agent for over 30 years, and knows the financial devastation caused by crashes due to poor choices behind the wheel. And whereas, as a member of the Merrimack community, has volunteered his time and energy into staging the mock accident event at Merrimack High School. And whereas, this event allows students to see firsthand what happens during a car crash, the injuries, risk of death, loss of loved ones, destruction of vehicles and property, and extent of emergency response. And whereas, his contributions have helped educate students and student drivers on the very real consequences of making poor choices while behind the wheel. And whereas, his efforts have no doubt helped save countless lives. Therefore, be it declared that Dan, in his capacity as an educator and a mentor, has made a huge impact on the young driving community. And be it further declared, by virtue of my signature inscribed below, the House of Representatives does publicly thank Daniel Bantham for his longstanding public service to the community of Merrimack by promoting safe and responsible driving. Dated this 16th day of October 2023, Sherman A. Packard, Speaker of the New Hampshire House. Thank you, Dan. And your envelope.
Not so fast, Dan. And again, on behalf of the Merrimack School District, we thank you in recognition of more than 30 years of prevention education with your outstanding contributions to Merrimack High School.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next up, it's my pleasure to introduce Representative Nancy Murphy. Pardon me, Representative Bill Boyd is next.
Maureen, thank you. And Mr. Chairman, good to see you. Mr. Superintendent, good to see you. And to the board members, good to see you, folks. Thanks for being here tonight. I'm very pleased to offer, on behalf of Representative Rung and the rest of the legislative colleagues, Representative McGue, Representative Murphy, Nodder, and Healy, and myself, Representative Thomas, I'd like to invite Mark Rivett up to the dais, please. Mark, thank you very much for what you've done to the community of Merrimack, but especially having a positive impact on the students here in the town of Merrimack. You certainly have gone above and beyond the call of what ordinary people might not do on a daily basis. You certainly personify what it means to be a true civic servant in our community of Merrimack, so I want to thank you. I have here in front of me a declaration from the state of New Hampshire, from the House of Representatives, in recognition of Mark Rivett. Whereas, Mark Rivett has owned and operated Rivett's Funeral Home in Merrimack, a business operated by the Sam family for over 60 years. And whereas, in addition to contributing assistance with the mock accident event at Merrimack High School, he helped produce a video called "Just You and I" with the Students Against Destructive Decisions organization. And whereas, this video has been used as an educational tool to teach students the importance of staying focused behind the wheel without distractions and while sober. And whereas, his involvement with this organization has enriched the lives of those who have watched and participated in the mock accident event and the production of video materials. Therefore, be it declared that Mark, in his capacity as educator and mentor, has made a huge impact on the young driving community. And be it further declared, by virtue of my signature inscribed below, the House of Representatives does publicly thank Mark Rivett for his longstanding public service to the community of Merrimack by promoting safe, responsible driving and ensuring that everyone gets home safely. Dedicated, the 16th day of October 2023, Sherman Packard, Speaker of the House. Mark, thank you. Congratulations. Okay. All right, here we go. Excellent, Mark. Appreciate it.
And once again, on behalf of the Merrimack School District, thank you very much, Mark, for recognition of more than 30 years of prevention education with your outstanding contributions to Merrimack High School.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And without further ado, my esteemed colleague, the Honorable Nancy Murphy.
Hello, everybody. I'm delighted to be here. As a parent of a number of children that have gone through this program, I have very fond memories for very many years. So I'm delighted to have the opportunity tonight to make a presentation to Mr. Stephen Clair, and I wonder if you could come up? And I see I'm the only one that needs reading glasses. I have a declaration from the Speaker of the House that I'd like to present to Merrimack High School SAD organization, state of New Hampshire, House of Representatives, a declaration in recognition of Merrimack High School SAD organization. Whereas, Students Against Destructive Decisions, SAD, has been in operation for 40 years and is part of the Merrimack High School community. And whereas, this organization works to ensure teenagers learn the skills and strategies to resist destructive decisions. And whereas, SAD empowers students to combat peer pressure, assume leadership within their community, and serve as role models for fellow students. And whereas, Merrimack High School has successfully welcomed and collaborated with local business leaders to participate in important programs to help SAD attain its mission of fostering happy, healthy, and productive youth. Therefore, be it declared that the Students Against Destructive Decisions organization be recognized for its endeavors in the education of dangerous behavior and its consequences to students and young drivers alike. And be it further declared, by virtue of my signature inscribed below, the House of Representatives does publicly thank Merrimack High School and its program, Students Against Destructive Decisions, for helping to save lives and teaching our youth the importance of making good decisions behind the wheel. Dated the 16th day of October 2023, Sherman Packard, Speaker of the House.
And Jim Bailey knows, and we all do, that it takes a village. And he wants to, I'm gonna hand the microphone over to him for the next part of the program and to recognize others in the audience who've been really important to the SAD program. Mr. Bailey.
So again, this is half of our team. Can you guys hear me all right? And we really couldn't pull this off without a lot more people that help us every year. They're a phone call away for us. A lot of these people see the importance of this program, that I really feel that we're saving some lives here. And I'm gonna show a couple of photos, a small PowerPoint program, to explain what we do at the mock accident. But before I do that, if I could just invite the rest of my team, which is basically the fire chief, who the fire department is there for us at every one of these mock accidents that we do, they help us cut cars up. We try to make this as real as possible. We don't sugarcoat it. So what these students are seeing is what we see just about every day or way too often. Also, as part of this program, we have to seat 300 seniors somewhere on O'Gara Drive. So with every year, with the help of the Highway Department, we have Lori from the Highway Department. She actually checks in with me every spring, say, "Jim, what's the date? What's the time? Where do you need me?" And she's very instrumental on getting the bleachers. We gotta go around to the ballparks and get the bleachers to O'Gara Drive to seat a little over 300 kids, it seems, as though that number keeps going up. One year, there was a bit of a disconnect, no fault of Lori's, between highway and something went wrong. So the night before the mock, I went over to the O'Gara Drive site to make sure everything was in place, and there were no bleachers. So by now, it was like 4:30 in the afternoon, and we had to do some fast thinking on our feet. So I grabbed the flatbed and a couple of guys, and we went over to the ballfields with my tow trucks and actually asked the people sitting on the bleachers that we needed, the chair they were sitting on. And we loaded the bleachers up and brought them down to the field, and that's when I realized how wide those things are going down the road. They take up pretty much the whole lane. But again, we really appreciate your support with that. Also, I'd like to mention the representatives from the bus company. If you could come up as well, please. The scene that we do here, we don't want the seniors to see it right away when they come down from the high school, so we have to find some way of blocking these crashed cars. So when they march down O'Gara Drive onto the bleachers, all they see is a row of buses. And again, Michelle is my contact person, unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, but she's a phone call away. She checks with me every year, "Jim, what time? When do you need me there?" And we keep forgetting how many buses we need. It's either six or seven, or I'd rather have one too many than not enough. But they do a great job of blocking the scene, and then once we're ready to show the guys the program, they just start the buses and pull off. Also, we have, without a doubt, the Police Department, Chief, if you could come up, and Mr. Vandecide, they're very instrumental at this, because not only is the Fire Department making it look as real as possible with cutting cars open, dealing with patients, the Police Department is there, and they are doing their job, which is basically securing the scene, checking safety, but also they're recognizing that it turns from an accident scene quickly to a crime scene. And they pick up the evidence, and they see things, and they see it right away, and they have to act accordingly, and then they start asking questions, and they start arresting drivers, handcuffs, throwing them in the cruiser. So without their help, we really couldn't make this look as real as we do. Also, last and very not least, Mallory, if you could come up from the high school, she is my rock. She is my organizer. She does such a good job of keeping, with all of her kids, and I'm very impressed, Mallory, with the students that you have onboard helping you. For the young generation, it's a lot of energy. You want to come up as the President of SAD? I'm impressed, every year, we have more than enough help, and the girls and the boys, they do a great job. It's not an easy job. We look for someone to be a victim, which actually gets zipped up in a body bag, and again, we don't sugarcoat this. And we have a senior that every year steps up to the plate, gets zipped up in a body bag, loaded into Mark's limousine, hearse. So again, Rob Ketchy is one of my own part-time tow truck drivers. If you can come up, Rob, he's there every year for me, setting the cars up while we're taking care of things on my side of it. Rob's there, putting the cars together. We make skid marks on the, that's a lot of fun, making skid marks on O'Gara Drive and try to realistically the scene. Also, Jeff Hastings, if I could ask you to come up as well? Oh, you gotta take the picture? Okay. The year of COVID, we had to really rethink things, and we were not able to put 300 students onto the bleachers. So we had to do some reorganizing, and Jeff was a big part of helping us put together a video that we did at that year. And he supplied the drone, he's at almost every mock that I do, he probably is at every mock, to give us the photo coverage that we need so that we can advertise it on wherever we can advertise it, and he gives us very professional pictures, and we really certainly appreciate that. So this is the team. It's huge, and I couldn't do it by myself. And when Lori asked me, "Hey, can I come up and give you a little thing?", I'm like, "How about if you give me a big thing?". And there's so many people here that I really appreciate everyone's help and looking forward to, again, our meetings starting in January, right? We're gonna start, oh, no, not? November? Oh, I didn't get the email. Caitlin, where's Caitlin? You saw, okay. Caitlin, my daughter, yeah, can't forget to mention her. She tells me where I need to be and what I'm doing when I get there. So again, thank you very much, everybody. This is huge to me. It really, I actually had a student come to my shop, some help, looking for help with her car, and she had graduated probably five or six years previous. And she said to me, and this really made me feel good, she said, "Mr. Bailey, ever since I saw that mock accident that you did at the high school, I will never, ever pick up a drink and get behind the wheel of a car." So that one student saying that to me, I'm like, "Great, we're getting through." And I can tell you that the look on these kids' faces on the bleachers, "We're getting through. This is getting etched right here." And I'm hoping they remember it for the rest of their life, because not only are they leaving high school in May, most of them are going off to college, they're leaving the nest, and they're gonna be on their own, making their own decisions, and their parents aren't gonna be there watching over their shoulder. So if we show them these slippery slopes that they could go down, and it always starts out as a good time, "Oh, we're socializing, going over this place, we're gonna have some drinks", or whatever it is that they do, it never starts out as, "We're gonna go out and have a horrific accident tonight." It just flips 180 degrees like that, and knowledge is power. And if we could educate these kids at a young age, and hopefully they can carry through the rest of their life remembering what they saw. And it's definitely, the hair stands up on the back of your neck, we make this so real on purpose. So thank you again, everybody.
Yes, stay put for a second. I think we have some certificates for all of the, many of the people.
Oh, you do?
We do.
Excellent. Thank you.
I get to start? I'm so glad I get to start. I am going to present a certificate to Mallory Nimsick, the SAD advisor, in recognition and appreciation of your support and participation with the mock accident event for Merrimack High School students. And I am so thankful that I get to present this to you, because she has personally mentored my daughter, whose name is on the next certificate. And the next certificate I have is for Chloe Hardy, who is the current SAD president, in recognition and appreciation of your support and participation with the mock accident event for Merrimack High School students, and being a pretty great kid for the last 17 years.
Okay, so the rest of the certificates, we're going to go to Rob Ketchy, who also supports Jimmy Bailey in recognition and appreciation for your support and participation of the mock accident event for Merrimack High School students.
For also keeping the school board safe during the Fourth of July parade.
The next one is Jeff Hastings' frame of mind photo, in recognition and appreciation for your support and participation of the mock accident event for Merrimack High School students.
I would like to award the certificate to Michelle Bancroft, in recognition and appreciation of your support and participation with the mock accident event for Merrimack High School And the certificate goes to Lori Halverson, again, in recognition and appreciation for your support and participation with the mock accident event for Merrimack High School
I'll go next. This is for, this certificate is for the Town of Merrimack Department of Public Works in recognition, in recognition and appreciation and support and participa, of support and participation with the mock accident event for Merrimack High School students.
And the next is to the Merrimack Fire Department, in recognition and appreciation for your support and participation with the mock accident event for the Merrimack High School students. And finally, for the Police Department, for all you do to keep us safe, but also in recognition for all you do for the mock accident. Thank you.
Should we get a group picture?
Picture time.
All right.
Jim, this is for, I'm, sorry, we can.
Oh, okay. I'll make sure to get some.
Go on the halls.
Get the drill.
Short move.
Lay down.
That's a, already started.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Just give us 40 years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Is it still on? So if you folks, if you folks have a few minutes, we could show this slide real quick so the people at home could see a little bit more about what we do, or how this program works. helps us get set up. And also, Lori, make sure that that parking lot is level, because over the wintertime, sometimes it gets to be some big puddle, so she'll go out there and grade it if needed to get it level enough to bring those bleachers in. The buses are there from our bus company. There's drivers sitting in all the buses, waiting for the thumbs up to start. The crashed cars are just on the other side of those buses, you can't see them in this photo. We have students in the lift getting videos or whatever they need, so we have support to raise them up to get a good shot. Ready for the next one. So there's your 300 very young adults right there. I see those kids, and I say, "Wow, you're really 18 years old. They look like they're 12." But yeah, those are the kids. I graduated Merrimack High, so I kind of have a personal stake on the success of their life. And I feel that we're reaching out to a lot of these guys. And I'm hoping to talk to Mallory sometime, that maybe one year. We did a mock trial one year, and I think that had just as much of an impact as the mock accident did. And I'm hoping, Mallory, we can talk about that, because one year when we did the mock trial, we had real judges, Judge Kinghorn helped us. We had a prosecutor, we had a defense attorney, we had a courtroom set up, we had a jury, and we brought the defendant up on a stand in an orange jumpsuit, which we could probably, is that the next one? That's the last one. We brought the defendant up in a orange jumpsuit, and after the trial, they obviously, the jury found the person guilty of manslaughter, I believe it was. And after the trial was over, we were milling around, we always have pizza or whatever to hang out with the kids after the program is over, and this young lady came up to our group of the attorneys, and she said to one of the attorneys, I think it was a defense attorney, she said, "What do you, how much college education do you have to become an attorney like that?". And he told her, and it was a lot.
attorney like that? And he told her, and it was a lot of years of college that he had to go through. And she said, after seeing this presentation today, I'm changing my major. I want to go into law. So that was, we're reaching these kids, honestly, you know? They got open minds and we gotta give them more credit than a lot of people do. They figure it out. So, next picture? There's the fire department doing their thing. They, again, they make it real. It's pretty impressive how they can separate their personal emotions to be state professional on the job, no matter how young that person is, or how injured or hurt that person is. They're always there for us. 911, bang, they're there, no questions asked. Next. There's Mark with the hearse. There's one of our volunteer students playing the victim. I believe that is a mom. We had a crying mom show up at the accident scene, that she did an amazing job, just screaming her head off and kneeling down in front of her lost daughter. But again, just trying to make it real and not sugarcoat this. So, again, thank you, Mark, every year for being there for us. Next one. There's law enforcement doing their job. There's a screaming mom in the background over there. This young lady was getting handcuffed, so probably was asked some questions that the police department saw was a criminal activity. And again, it quickly goes from an accident scene to a crime scene. And that person, that student right there, she could have had college plans, she could have had all kinds of plans. And that all goes down the drain and your life goes on hold. I suppose they're lucky to be alive sometimes. But, next one. There's another help with law enforcement. The makeup, we have this company that comes up every year and makes these wounds look so real. Some of the kids in the audience turn a little white from seeing this, but that's okay. Next slide. There's another shot of the seniors. They're really focused on this. And I am always looking at their facial expressions when I'm out there, kind of watching this whole thing go. It's funny because it takes months of planning. And when you hit the start button on this, you just sit back and it just goes all by itself. It's in cruise control. Next. There's the car that the fire department will cut to get the roof off, to get the patients out. Again, they get the jaws of life out there. They will have fake smoke coming from the car. They have a smoke machine that they set up in front of the car to make it look like it's on fire. Next. So, this is the assembly we had after one of the accidents. We built a jail cell. And I actually went to the state prison to find out what the dimensions of a jail cell was. And that was pretty close. We put a mattress frame in there and we went to Lowe's and bought a brand new toilet and put that inside the cell to kind of give the kids the impression that you have no privacy in jail. Your bathroom is where your, where your bedroom is. So that was just something, again, trying to drive the point home, that these social events that they're going out on to have fun, join some people, have this, have that, how quickly it can go bad. And I think we're reaching out to a lot of these kids. And lastly, this young lady right here is the reason why I'm gonna continue to do this. And I'm not stopping. This parent's lost this young lady at 20 years old. She was hit by a drunk driver, wrong way drunk driver on the Everett Turnpike, and she did not survive. Neither one of them survived. The drunk driver that hit her died, and she died as well. This is continuing to go on. Unfortunately, we're not gonna stop it. But I feel that as a group, the group that you just saw, can make a difference here and start curbing it and start slowing it down. And I feel if we show this to 300 kids that are about to go out and live their lives, that maybe we can save a life like this, and maybe her life wasn't lost in vain. And that is it. I thank you all very much for, for tonight. It means a lot. Thank you.
Can I say something for?
I would love to open up discussion from the board.
So, I just want to say thank you so much for coming. Because I've been hearing about this for the last four years. The story she tells, I don't believe this is true, but the story she tells that she snuck in when she was a freshman and saw the mock crash. I'm sure she somehow got in some other way. But she saw, she saw the, okay. So my child broke the rules and snuck in to see the mock crash as a freshman. But that is one, how she got involved in SAD. And I've been hearing about this for four years and I never had seen it. And I didn't understand why she saw that. In my mind, it wasn't as convincing as it clearly is. So I didn't really know. Like, she saw it and she was like, I, I want to be part of this. And she's been part of it ever since. And it's really been kind of cool now that she, she gets to be here and have the opportunity. I was told this year, though, that she's going to be the one zipped into the body bag and I am going to be the hysterical mother, a part which I will play brilliantly. Because if that were to happen to my daughter, that is exactly who I would be. So, I thank you all for doing that. You've had such an impact on my own family, my, my daughter, but also my other kids that are coming behind and in front. So, thank you so much.
And I'll, I'll just echo too, you provide such an invalid, like, the value of this, whatever you want to call it, show, this performance, I'm a musician, so I think of it as a performance. But it really, I mean, it lasts forever with these kids. And I've been in a lot of districts where this doesn't happen. And I can only imagine how this changes a student's perception of the world in so many ways, just this one afternoon. So the amount of work and time and energy that goes into it is just so, so valuable to us. So thank you again so much for all your help. And, and just, we hope it continues because, as you said, it's never gonna stop, but at least we can make a change. Sure. Go ahead, Lori.
I reiterate everything my colleagues have said. I do appreciate this very much. It is so, I've heard from the students. It does have an impact. And the fact that they get to see what their decisions will make, I mean, we know their brains are not developed till 25, but to see the consequences of potential decisions that they can make is so powerful, so powerful. And I thank every one of you for the time and investment that you've made into this. I know it's an incredible amount of work. And, and so it's really, really appreciated. I do want to just take a, a personal moment, I don't normally say something like this, but I want to thank the fire department and the police department. You were there for my family when my dad fell and died from a brain bleed in three hours. And I want to thank Mark at the funeral home, because my parents had just moved here from Colorado. And we knew nothing. We were totally unprepared for that. It was sudden. And you guys were there for our family. And I know you guys are there for every member of this community. And I just want to just give you a shout out of what you meant to my family. Thank you.
So, thank you, everyone. I just, when I was over at Campbell High School, I wanted to do the mock accident there. So I contacted people in Hudson and the people in Merrimack responded and drove to Hudson, drove to Campbell High School in Litchfield and did the mock accident there, out of the goodness of their hearts, because they're all about prevention education. And it doesn't really matter what town you live in, but we're fortunate to live in this town. And we have such a great town and such a great community. So, thank you. But also, thank you for extending that prevention education to help all kids in our state.
May I just say to Jim and Dan and Mark and, and everyone else who has been part of this, you know, this is, this is my 54th year in this profession. And I have to tell you, tonight was the most profoundly meaningful recognition I've, I've ever been associated with. And I can't thank you enough for doing all that you do, everyone here tonight, in the effort to save our young adults. So that every family doesn't have to experience the tragedy that some do. And so, can't thank you enough. You, you will never know how much of a difference you are making and continue to make in the lives of families. So, thank you again.
Thanks, guys. All right, now who's ready for some informational updates? Oh, you don't all have to leave. Thank you. I guess nobody's ready for some informa- all right, we got some. All right. Well, then we will move on to our informational updates. And we shall start with our superintendent update.
All right, I want to thank Amy and the staff and the Professional Development Committee for putting together a terrific program back on the Friday before the Columbus Day weekend. It was extraordinarily well planned and well received. We started our budget meetings today. We go around to each school. We meet with the administrative team to review their budgets. We have a number of questions that we cover with the administrators, enrollments, class sizes, the current and emerging needs of students, professional development requirements, new curriculum that is planned to be implemented, both now and in the future. So, there are a number of topics that we cover in each and every discussion. We talk about facilities, we talk about capital improvement needs, co-curricular activities, materials and supplies, library, media, transportation. It's everything, everything is in question and in discussion. So, the principals have been doing an outstanding job in putting together their budgets, along with other administrators with Budget Authority. And so Amy and Matt, Melissa, Sarah Reinhardt, Sarah Perato, and Jason Pelletier, our technology director, we all meet. Amy and Sarah, and Sarah were at the conference today, so they weren't able to meet today's, but we have two more meetings this week. We have Reed's Ferry and Thornton's Ferry. And we appreciate the staff input. After we meet with the administrators, we meet with the staff on a voluntary basis. And they provided us with some great insight today. Because I always tell them, if I want to know how to improve a school district, I won't read it out of a, a book. I'll go to the practitioners in Merrimack, who know the students, who care about the students, who know what their strengths are, what their areas of need are, and can really effectively articulate those needs to us. And that's our job then, to quantify those needs, explain them to you, explain them to the, to the budget committee, and to the deliberative session also. Want to thank our, our football team, our football coach. I think I sent you an email last week. We had a young, young student who was part of our summer program, our extended school year program. Some of the high school students worked with him during the summer program. They happened to be on the football team. And they were talking to the coach about how enjoyable it was, how meaningful it was to them. And the coach suggested that they make this young man honorary captain of the football team, which they did. And this child's mother said, our son and our family, we'll never forget this experience. And I know that he has made some lifetime bonds with members of the team. So congratulations to our football team members and the coach and coaching staff for making a difference in the life of a student, for making a difference in the life of his family. It's one of the great things that we experience every day of the school year, with wonderful students, wonderful staff, doing great things for each other. And congratulate them heartily. In ending off the informational update, we all are very much aware of the very tragic circumstance in the Middle East. I did send a email to the staff last week indicating that if any of them are experiencing any difficulties and would need some assistance, and also if any students are having a difficult time processing what's going on, understanding what's going on, that our counseling staff would certainly be available to, to speak with them. So, to our moms and dads, if, if you, if you see that your child is having a lot of questions, having difficulty experiencing or articulating any of those questions, or dealing with scenes on TV, please let us know. Because we will always be glad to, to help them. I do want the community to know also that we immediately reached out to the police department. Our message to the staff also was that school safety is important every single day, that we cannot, we cannot let our guard down. Anything can happen at any time, in any place across this country. And we want to be prepared to help save our students and save our staff. And so that message went out to them. We've been in contact with the chief and deputy chief of the police department, who have been extraordinarily helpful to us and cooperative. And so we will continue to meet with them and discuss with them to make sure that we, we try to keep things as safe and normal as possible for our staff and our students. And that's it for my update.
Thank you, Bill. Questions from the board? And I know those budget discussions are part of their presentation coming up in a little bit, that we'll be talking about. So, look forward to hearing that. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to echo what Bill said. We had a great day of professional development on October 6th, at least, at least I think it was pretty great. We offered a lot of different opportunities for staff based on their role. We offered some curriculum work. We had New Hampshire Learning Initiative on board, working with the, both the middle and the high school staff. Sarah and her team did some work with the CPI. We also offered, hmm, trying to think of other things, because it was a lot of things that day that we offered in HLI. Oh, and iReady. We had a really, really, I would say, really intense PD session on iReady. We were looking at our own data per building. So the teachers came in and it was facilitated by a, a member of the Curriculum Associate staff. So they come in and they teach the teachers how to access their students' data. And as far as parents, parents have been reaching out, wondering when they're going to get their information. I did send out an email last week to let parents know that those results would be presented at the upcoming November conferences. It seems best that the first time that we're giving this assessment, that we provide that information with, you know, in, in a partnership. So we're presenting the information and allowing parents to ask questions about what that means for their specific student. But if a parent would like that information before their November conference, they can reach out to me directly, they could reach out to their building principal. We do have ways of generating those reports before that day. And speaking of iReady, we have scheduled a webinar on November 1st from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And we invite all, all parents in kindergarten through grade six to join us that night. We'll be joined from a member of the Curriculum Associate staff. And we'll be going through an overview of the tool, discuss how it's going to be used in the Merrimack School District, and answer any question that parents might have. I also just want to mention that last week, we did our first district data dive for the fall. We looked at a wide variety of information. Our state assessment data from the spring finally was released by the state. So that was good for us to be able to have all of that information to look at. We also looked at SATs, the YRBS data from 2021. Again, we looked at our iReady data, the Gallup poll results. And I just want to also mention and send a thank you to all the building administrators. It was a really long morning, but there was representation from every building, which really helps us to have collaborative conversations about what we're doing well, and also opportunities where we can put some additional structures and, and programming in place for our students.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Excellent. Thank you so much, Amy. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Yes, thank you. I see you have later on in your agenda, agenda, new central office discussion. Just want to let you know, I took the design done by Paul Marinase. We pretty much specked that out pretty well and kind of have it at a point where it's, it's, it's fairly constant. I don't believe it's gonna change that much, maybe some finer tweaks. And we do have to that end for projects that, that's been kind of poking me in the backside for the past 23 years. We finally have around three and going to be pretty soon four, very good quotes, bids, estimates as to what it was gonna cost. And in either case, if we go for a 10 or 15-year bond on it, it's gonna come in well under the, the $800,000 debt that we just shed for paying off the middle school finally, which 10 years ago, I thought, you know, that'd be a really place, a good place to slide that in. And now it's here. I didn't think we're gonna have to wait 10 years, but you know, we waited 10 years. And now it's for the benefit, right? The, the better. So, timing sometimes is perfect and sometimes timing, you can't force it, you have to wait for it to come to you. And I think this has come to us right now. So I do have around four quotes. At some time, we're gonna talk about it. Maybe a planning and building committee first, and then we'll wheel it out to the board after they take a look at it. So, we're, we're moving.
Always forward.
Yes.
Progress. Great. Thank you, Matt. Questions from the board? All right. Moving on to School Board update. Not a whole lot to update on. Moving on to School Board update, not a whole lot to update on. Just a quick, I was updating my fellow members here earlier. I went to the Delegate Assembly this past Saturday, which was very fascinating. I've never been to one before. It was really interesting to get a chance to collaborate with school board members from all across the state. Of the 160 school boards, 59 were represented this weekend. And when it came time to voting, to vote on the proposed resolutions, all of the school board recommendations did pass, or the association's recommendations did pass, and the two that we had concerns on were amended. The one regarding state aid for kindergarten was amended to specifically state, state aid to kindergarten. And Lori's suggestion was brought up. I proposed it and was accepted for the due diligence aspect on implied parental consent. No argument, so we are representative on that. So nice job there. And it was probably the most beneficial thing. I had two things to come out of that meeting that I took away. First of all, the Oyster River School District, which apparently won School Board of the Year. That's an award that exists, who knew? And they did a whole, they did a whole presentation on just their relationship with the board and the superintendent and their team. And I was pretty pleased at how much of the things they do that we also do. It was great to see, like, oh yeah, we do that, and kind of checking off all the boxes with that. It was great. I also learned that the New Hampshire State School Board Association, I'm probably the last person to know this, has a guy on their team who specifically reviews policies. So I thought, hey, if that might be a really great resource to reach out to, since we're doing a very deep dive into our policies right now. He's a lawyer, but also an educator, and so that's all he does for the State School Board Association. So that might be a resource that we reach out to in the future, for sure. But it was great. It was a good day. They didn't feed us lunch, that was the one bummer. But anyway, moving on to Student Representative update.
Wait, don't move on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say thank you for going. I know you're not exactly, you know, overflowing with free time.
No, that's true.
So it really was awesome that you took the time out of your own personal schedule. You didn't have to do that, to go and represent us, and to learn, and to, you know, figure out what that was all about. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I look forward to going back. I actually enjoyed myself.
And nothing if not competitive, so I don't know how you win that award, but we're going for it.
There you go. It was, they mentioned some nomination process, so if you're listening out there, yeah, that was new for me. Student Representative update, our student representative is not joining us tonight, but he will be back next week, and he promises some interesting and good updates for us. Moving on to old business, I don't believe we have any, unless I'm mistaken. We will move on to new business, with our first update being from Sarah Perato and our Student Wellness update.
Now you can hear me? Wonderful. Thank you for having me. It's lovely to see you all again. I've prepared some slides just to talk about where we are currently in our wellness program and where we'll be heading throughout the year. It should be fairly familiar to you, as I use the same template that Fern used. So I just started talking about some of our goals that we have here, and in particular, Strategic Objective 3, which pertains to our social and emotional development and well-being for staff, students, and families. You'll notice a timeline up here, which is the initial timeline we talked about. I really appreciate the fact that you guys were so kind and gave me a little extra time since I started at the end of July to update our plan and make sure that it was tip-top shape before presenting it. But going forward, I will stick to this timeline of updates in July, plan at the end of September. So we have four areas of focus in this presentation, but also in general, when we're talking about well-being. That's our System of Care framework, that's the framework with which we operate throughout the school year. Our Professional Development and Committee work, particularly staff development, student social, emotional learning and wellness, and then our community and family engagement. So in the presentation, you'll see information about all of those. This is probably old news for you guys, but this is just a reminder about the tiered prevention framework. So when we talk about systems of care, we talk about our three tiers of prevention or intervention. So that Tier 1 is what everyone receives, stuff like our positive behavioral expectations throughout our schools, that's a very common one. It could be something like classroom curriculum, access to school counseling, those are all Tier 1 pieces within our school district that we implement. Tier 2 and Tier 3 are more individualized, so Tier 2 typically is our group work with students who need just a little extra skill building to get back to baseline. And Tier 3 are our students who need more intensive and individualized supports. This is nothing new, it's something we've been doing in school for years and years and years. But in particular, this calls out our community partners and facilitated referrals to community mental health associations. Any questions before I move on from this slide? Just a reminder of our System of Care framework that we're using. So within our System of Care, the big pieces here are making sure that we have data-informed decision-making. I think that's something that we'll talk about a little bit later in this presentation, ensuring that we are doing what's best for students and have the data to back that up, creating our system to improve pathways for students, making sure that every learner has access to what they need to be successful, being in line with the law. RSA 135F speaks about System of Care within all publicly state-funded groups and associations, including educational associations such as SAU 26. And then we also consult with New Hampshire Education Department about MTSSB. They have specific consultants from the Office of Social Emotional Wellness. We work with Catherine Lesswing, who is absolutely phenomenal and has been nothing but helpful within our work to make sure that we're following System of Care framework. So just some updates on Professional Development Committee work. We, this year, will be working on Responsive Classroom Professional Development, Suicide Prevention, which will come out in March, Mandated Reporting, which is an expectation every year that our staff go through training on that. CPI, and in particular, that's called out here because of changes to the law in restraint and seclusion. CPI is considered a therapeutic intervention, and therefore, we're making sure all of our wellness professionals have training on that. And then Restorative Practices was an area in which our administrative staff called out as a space in which we could do a little bit better, educating ourselves in that arena. So I've added that to this list as well. We have professional learning committees, and K-12 alignment with ASCA and CASL was something that I thought would be really important, to make sure all of our wellness professionals are aligned with industry standards. We are going to create goals based on student needs, not just based on what we feel is best. So we're going to use data from universal screening, from our Power School data, including attendance, conduct, and just engagement with our services, to make sure that we are providing what students need efficiently and effectively. And then, previous to my onboarding, we funded some slots for collaborative problem-solving training for our wellness professionals. That seems to be going really well. People are very interested in taking the training and then utilizing it. And hopefully, I will be able to take the training in December as well, and I can provide some updates on that. And then last but not least, we have a District System of Care Committee, and that meets quarterly to speak on a district level about wellness initiatives and what we're seeing within our community. Underneath that, we have three subgroups, which were voted on by administrators. So we decided to focus on Restorative Practices implementation, database decision-making, and then intervention implementation. You'll notice a lot of this has to do with making sure we're making the best decisions for students, and I think that's a really important focus. In terms of our students, we are going to improve our fidelity to intervention. I think that it's great to have a lot of opportunities for students, but we need to make sure what we're doing, we are doing well. So focusing on fidelity will help us to ensure all of our interventions are being provided to the best of their scope. We're going to identify students' strength and need through universal screening this year, and you'll receive more information about that very soon. We are going to update our suicide prevention practices to make sure we're aligned with updates to our policy. We will implement restorative practices to improve our outcomes for students, specifically around attendance and discipline referrals. I think that we'll focus primarily on the middle school this year around that. They seem to be really ready for implementation and education. I've created a website to share SEL resources with educators within the wellness stratosphere, so making sure they have access to best practices, compliance advisors, things like that. And then finally, we're going to align our current initiatives with student need and district strategic plan, and in particular, we're going to look at our curriculum. Last but not least, we're going to talk about community and family engagement. This is an area I think we could really improve on. So some things we're going to do this year, we're going to host Screenagers. I know we've done that in the past, but just provide another opportunity. And I hope to secure funding to show the sequel to this. It seems to be profound, and I think people would really benefit from seeing the second piece of this documentary. We're going to start sending out regularly scheduled communication again. I know Fern had a monthly newsletter, so I'm going to go through the website with Adam Goodman and make sure it's up to date, and then start doing those monthly updates as well. I'd really like to sustain and expand community partnerships this year. I did attend the ACERT meeting on Friday to make sure I'm connected with our Police Department and with any wraparound services for students that experience adverse childhood experiences that we are aware of. And then I'd like to create a family engagement vision statement and improvement plan, so we can really drill down on what engagement looks like for Merrimack, not just involvement. I know that was a lot of information really quickly. Can I answer any questions?
Open it up. If anybody has any questions? I have one that might be impossible to answer.
Sure.
So, you know, I talked to a lot of teachers, and I haven't personally witnessed this, but I hear from a lot of my colleagues about just behavior, and especially since the pandemic, where our kids are at. We're talking about a large group of kids here. Where are our kids at in terms of behavior? Are you noticing trends one way or the other? Do you even have that info right now?
Sure, I would love to provide you more specific information. I think I can speak anecdotally.
Sure.
I've noticed students are almost like a year or so behind where we would expect them to be developmentally in terms of their behavior. They're not malicious by any means, but they are engaging in almost immature behavior sometimes. So I'm really hoping that our strengths-based screener will help provide information to us for our K-8 students, what strengths are there, and which areas we need to continue to support to improve those behaviors and really help students engage in learning. And also, I do think it'll help with staff retention, because it can be exhausting to deal with behavior every single day when you really just want to do what you do best and what you love, and that's teach.
That is helpful. And I'll be interested too, based on your presentation, we can see sort of where we're at with referrals and things throughout the year, and then it'd be really interesting a year, two years, you know, just looking at those numbers and seeing which way are we progressing, for sure. I almost wish we had that before the pandemic, but that's great to know, thank you.
Absolutely. I was just going to add to what Ken said and what you said. I'd be interested to see when you start putting that data and looking at things as you're screening, because I'm just seeing from my perspective as a teacher, it's not just being a year or two behind, it's regression as well, where ninth graders are not acting like seventh graders, they're acting like third graders, and those kinds of behaviors. And seeing that regression, especially in the middle school. So they're not just not where we'd expect them to be, but they're further behind than they ought to be, even if they are behind, that kind of thing. So I'll be interested to see for Merrimack what that data looks like. And also, you said, in the future, in the near future, we'll be seeing the universal screening. What's the timeline on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're hoping to implement the DESA in November. I know that was something that had started rolling before I arrived here. Parents, there will be a training, sorry, I'll backtrack. There will be a training on Thursday for staff around how to implement the DESA, which is the DEVRO Student Strengths Assessment. And shortly after that, that following Monday, we'll send out information to parents. So I'll make sure you guys all receive that information as well. Screening will happen in November, and then once that data comes back and can be analyzed, I can provide an update on district-level information.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
You know, Sarah's only been with us for a relatively short amount of time, but it's clear that she is absolutely outstanding in terms of her communication, her collaboration, and her initiative. And she hit the ground running, as the old phrase goes, and a person who really doesn't need a lot of training in the field of SEL. And so we have to tell you how glad we are that she has joined us, because she's making a huge difference in our district.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill beat me to it. I was going to jump in and say almost the same thing. I work really closely with Sarah, and she, from the first day, just, you know, like she's been here forever. So thank you, Sarah, for coming tonight and the work that you've already started here.
Thank you, Amy.
And that's very evident by your presentation, for sure. You've put a lot of work into this in just a few months, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys. Thank you, Jenna.
All right, moving on. Fiscal year 2025 budget process.
Yes, it is, as the song goes, the most wonderful time of the year. And budget preparation time. And several weeks ago, Matt and I were talking about, how do we make sure that we bring as much clarity to the budget process as possible? Because we've, you know, we've sort of heard differing opinions of the who, what, when, where, and why, whose budget is it, at what point in time? And those who have input into the budget process are a little bit unsure of the sequence of things. So we put together a PowerPoint of the process, as we think it should play out. It's logical, and it follows the hierarchy of the approval process of the budget. I'll just go through it very quickly. I've shared it with Ken and Lori initially, and with Naomi Schoenfeld. Naomi was very pleased. She made a couple of changes to, I think it was step five, and a couple of language changes that we've included in here, because I think they provided clarity, greater clarity to the process. And so I think we're all on board, unless you have any suggested changes. You know, step one is where we are right now. We're in the process of gathering data. We're reviewing the strategic plan, some of the things that we covered in the August Academy, the Leadership Retreat, the goals that were articulated last June in our excellent goal-setting meeting. We're starting the process, we started today, to meet with the Principal and Assistant Principal of every building. And then on that same afternoon, which we did in fact do today, we met with the staff. Because I've always said to the staff, I could have 1,000 books in my office on how to improve public education, but I'm not going to read any of them. I'm going to talk with our staff, or with our students every day, who know their strengths, know their needs, and can clearly articulate those to us. So we use a lot of data. Certainly Amy's excellent session last week in terms of data dive. And so that's where we are, we're very much in the process of step one. Then we'll get together, we will meet with certainly the elementary principals to make sure there's consistency in terms of what we do, our philosophy and our approach, what the needs are. We will develop the respective site-based budget requests, maybe making some revisions here and there, with the understanding that we received from you, your desire a couple of years ago, that if we need something new, we first and foremost look at, can we reallocate some resources that are already within our budget, instead of asking for an incremental increase? Sometimes that's possible, sometimes that's not possible. We had that discussion today in our first budget meeting. What is it that we can do better, more efficiently? Can we substitute something that is of an emerging need for something else that we think we're doing a fine job at at the present time? So we, they will be reviewing and presenting their budgets as we said to Amy, Matt, Melissa, Sarah Perato, Sarah Reinhardt for Student Services, and Jason Pelletier, our Technology Director. And step three, we will present the school district budget initial request to you. Then you will meet with all of the administrators, as you have in the past. I think you learn a lot about what our needs are from their articulation of what their respective needs are. Matt will present, as he does very adeptly, the voter's guide for the stakeholders and the community members in Merrimack. You will ultimately, through your deliberation, discuss with us what your priorities are, and we will come to a school board budget. discuss with us what your priorities are, and we will come to a school board budget that is approved by you. That will be passed on to the Budget Committee. That convenes their meetings. Their liaisons will be meeting with, with our administrators. One of the things that I mentioned to Naomi that I think might be helpful that we're in the process of doing right now is constructing a sort of a common base of budget questions that will focus on some of the essential needs of the school district and allow the Budget Committee members to obtain as much insight as possible. Not meant to usurp any of their authority to ask questions, but just some helpful suggestions. And these are some of the things that make a difference in a school district and the opportunities that we present to students and also to staff. And so they will do the same excellent job. And I have to say, in a very positive manner, I think the Budget Committee, along with you, obviously, have been very positive in the support of our school district, and we're very, very much appreciative of that. And so they will finalize, as they have done customarily, their budget, which will go before the deliberative session. What we're hoping to do this year, and well, what we will be doing this year, is with the Budget Committee, prior to the administrators presenting their budgets and answering any questions, Matt and Amy and I are going to do an overview, a somewhat global presentation of some of the priorities that we're addressing in the budget, just to set, set the stage and the framework to frame the budget conversations. And from there, you know, it will go to the deliberative session and we'll keep our fingers crossed that the voters will once again realize that we're trying to do the right thing for students. Trying to really move the system forward. And it takes everyone's participation, everyone's cooperation. So hopefully this, you'll find this helpful. It's only meant to be helpful. And sort of a roadmap of, so that everyone can understand where we're going and when with the budget process. So we're glad to answer any questions, take any comments, or if you have any suggested modifications to this, we'll certainly be willing to, to discuss them with you.
We'll open it up for discussion. Well, I think if, if nothing else, this at least for the folks in our community who may not be as familiar with the process, I think this really shines a light on all the different steps that go into putting this together, all the conversations that happen. A lot of people only see what goes on during these meetings. So to have this sort of just explaining how it all works should, should really help quite a bit. And I like the addition of doing kind of a a general presentation of the budget at the deliberative or prior to the deliberative for the folks in Maramac to see that, because I think that's really, really important, once it's been reviewed and and looked at by everybody. So, so thank you. I think this is very, very helpful.
Thank you. And for the deliberative session, we want to work with the Budget Committee to put together maybe a one or two-page summary of the, the essential points and the needs that we're trying to address and the priorities that we have established for fiscal 25, so that we're all on the same page in that presentation.
Yeah, because, because by the time it gets to the Budget Warren article, that's the article that is presented to and moved to the deliberative session. It's presented by the Budget Committee. So it's important for us to be on the same page with what we want to convey as a message. And the document is really beneficial and helpful. You know, when you're, when you're like me and you've been here for so long and you've been doing this type of work for so long, you just take it for granted that everybody that you talk to knows exactly what you're doing. And the case is, I talked to a lot of people in town, like, how do you guys arrive at that? What are you, you know, and it's like, oh my gosh, we have to put this together. I mean, not everybody is there day to day looking at it like this, like we do. And after a while, you have a tendency to forget that. So I'm so grateful to Bill, Melissa, Amy, everybody else who put this document together, clarified the process, the meetings with Naomi and the Budget Committee Chair. And of course, you gotta put in Pat Heinrich because Pat always gives her two cents. I love her to death. Love you, Pat. And you know, it's always good to have that there and have it refreshed so everybody can understand it. And to help us, who've been doing it for a long time, to kind of refocus and say, okay, this is what we're really about. You know, we want to bring the, the critical issues to light and we want to have a conversation about that. And less about how many paperclips and TI-85 calculators we're, we're buying, which is important too. If you want to go there, we can go there. But I think the, the larger theme and theme behind the budget and what we want to accomplish with this budget is really the thing we want to convey to everybody. And I think, you know, we try and do that through multiple means, these meetings, the voter's guide, everything like that. So I think it's great.
I'd like to add one more to that list. So you talked about a document to summarize at, at the deliberative session. I actually think a PowerPoint would be beneficial at the MVD, MVD Annual Meeting. They've had PowerPoints to explain why rates were going up and visually showing you what was happening at the wells and and water treatment and those kinds of things. Same with the town. So I think, I'm a visual person, so taking those highlights and making a beautiful PowerPoint like this helps people see what it is that we're talking about, the most important critical priorities. I know it's something we haven't normally done, but I think it would be beneficial.
We have plenty to do that.
Yeah, because I think what happens when the people show up at the deliberative session, right, they're, they're showing up because they know this is the meeting where we talk about the money. But what they've missed is all the meetings where we talk about the priorities.
Correct.
And I think if we can make sure we lead with priorities and end with money while we have everybody in the room, that is so valuable.
That's a really good point, Jenna. Great. Well, thank you very much. We always look forward to those discussions. And they're coming up pretty soon. Speaking of discussions about money, we have a fundraising discussion that Lori is going to lead us through.
So basically, this is just to review current practices and understand, you know, what forms we're using, what are the oversights? What are the protocols that we're currently using in fundraising? It just seems to be a topic that people are discussing, so I don't know if maybe in the future, we can find out what the protocols are for fundraising at the high school and middle school. Are there forms that people fill out? Who's responsible for athletics versus clubs? So we just have more information.
We'll definitely put that together for you.
Safety. I mean, I have seen some of the kids at X, at the X-11 doing some pretty crazy stuff on the medians. And I think as a parent's perspective, I would not want my kid out there. So I just, there probably is someone overseeing all that, but it would be good to know from that high level position, what is our practice for those kind of fundraising events, whether it's soccer or, or any of the cheerleaders, any of those clubs that are out there or athletics out there?
I will say that I have the current policy, which goes back many, many years and some forms. But we're going to take a look at it. We'll look at sort of the best practices that are out there in terms of contact the School Board Association. Our legal counsel will put something together and bring that to you in the not too distant future.
So my question is just, are we, why are we limiting it to the high school and the middle school only? We're going across the board?
No.
Oh, because there's fundraising across the board.
That's correct.
Yeah, right? Even though they don't have athletics, I'm assuming. Well, they, they do for other things. And I think it might be the PTO. I don't know, but I think it would be good to know. We don't know, we should find out.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's going to, it's going to extend the entire organization.
Yeah, good point, Jenna. Great. Well, we look forward to those old documents and hopefully updating them. Seems to be a theme. Mimeograph, yeah.
Mimeograph.
Oh, no, I was kidding. Anyway. And then lastly, on new business before other is a new central office discussion. I'll hand it over to Lori again.
So the new central office building will be on the Warren article for voters in March. So I recently attended the planning and building meeting and so they're going to televise their next meeting. But they want to work with the school board to develop a strategy on how to get the word out and how to gain support. They're very excited that we're all one team and that we're working together. It was suggested by a former school board member that we also form an ad hoc committee that will work with the school board and the school planning and building committee to ask for interest of, of just citizens, sometimes people that are not connected to the schools to work with all of us. So they will also be able to get the word out. So I wanted to know if the board was interested in forming this committee. I guess it was very helpful in getting the middle school passed.
And it's funny you bring that up because going back to the assembly I was at on Saturday, the Oyster River School District talked about their committee to get their new middle school approved, which was by far a much more significant cost. But the ideas they had to, you know, literally knocking on doors, showing up at every event, showing up at every meeting. And even if it was just a representative from the school board or, or, you know, one of the members of the administrative team, just with the information, just like this is what we're, we're trying to do. And I think the vote at the end of the day, when they took it, was like 70 something percent of the talent was in favor of it. So some great ideas from that district going forward. But you know, I think the idea of a committee to just get the word out, it's hard to believe that not everyone tunes into these meetings, I know. So just to get that information out there, I think, I think that's a great plan.
Well, I think it's had also historical success in Maramac because I think that's what happened when we passed full day kindergarten. There was a, and I think, I don't even think the board necessarily was involved in that. I think it was parents that created their own committee and they got things out there and it was very, very successful.
Yeah. And I know I would very much be interested in being involved with that if we were to put that together, for sure. I know we're all very much united on getting this passed. So absolutely, let's keep that discussion going. Any other questions or discussion?
I guess the only other discussion will, can we put it on our website to ask people who are interested in being a part of it? And we can set up a meeting. The Planning and Building Committee is willing to meet with them at any time to, you know, start the process of going to Shaw, sitting outside, you know, all of those things that Ken just mentioned.
Great. Thank, thank you for your support. It's, it's long overdue and it's time.
Definitely. Any other new business? Go ahead, Lori.
I have one more thing. So I just, I love tonight being able to recognize people that give so much and I was thinking the next recognition that I would like to suggest is just by accident, I was in the guidance office and there was retired teachers who volunteer to work with students that are struggling. And I guess this has been going on for a number of years. We have people that come in, they don't get paid and they're working with our students. And I would love, you know, it doesn't have to be next meeting, but to get a list of people in the last three years or whatever that have dedicated so much time to help our students and, and have a recognition of them.
Yeah, I know.
That's the most, that's, it's fun, right?
Yeah. And we have a lot of community members that give up their time to come, to come do those kinds of things. So but I'll see Chuck Maurer's name on that list. But that'd be great. Yeah, I'd love to recognize those folks that help out our schools by volunteering. Any other other? We are taking a break from policies this evening due to the extensive discussions that have gone on and language changes. And I know Naomi has been working with Sandy and the SAU office to get a lot of that change. So we decided to hit the pause button. Don't worry, you policy heads out there, we'll be back next meeting with more. So we will move on to approval of minutes from the October 2nd, 2023, public and non-public. Or do we want to do this one at a time, I guess? We were all there, though.
So I make a motion that we accept the public minutes of October 2nd, 2023.
All those in favor? Aye, four zero zero. And I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Passes four zero zero. Moving on to consent agenda educator resignations and nominations.
There are no resignations or nominations for you to consider tonight.
Thank you, Amy. Moving on to committee reports. I had a meeting with the Professional Development Committee last Thursday. I was very brief, however, because I had to go to parent conferences. But a lot of discussion on how to, you know, approving workshops and, and things like that. So once again, it was a great discussion for the 20 minutes I was there. And I have my first Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee meeting next Tuesday, which I'm very much looking forward to. It's tomorrow. Thank you, Jenna. Yes. Yes, it is tomorrow. I knew that. I'll see you there. Any other committee reports? There you go. Great. Correspondence. I have none. Seeing none. Comments from the board.
So since our student rep wasn't here, I had seen on the Maramac High School page some interesting information. So for planning purposes, I want to let parents know that due to the week of November 6th, having early release on Thursday, November 9th, and no school on Friday, November 10th for the Veterans Day holiday, Maramac High School will not be having block days that week. Monday through Wednesday will be all period, will have all periods. Those, all seven periods that day and Thursday will be a seven-period early release day.
Thank you, Lori. I also just remembered, speaking of Maramac High School, an email I received from two Maramac High School students with concerns about the advisory block, which I believe is a common discussion point at the high school. And I immediately forwarded that to Steve Clare, who immediately responded to all of us and has put a committee together with students to get more information and see what they can do about that. So it looks like progress is being made in that, on that end. Any other comments? Moving on to public comments on agenda items. I don't see anybody here. So we will move on to, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, four zero zero. We'll see everybody in three weeks. Thank you. Good night.